It just sounds sick, you know, you're like, okay.
Just fine.
The first Wednesday of the month I'm happy.
If you're only sick, it's shorter.
Yep.
When he gets the long and does the test.
Right.
Don't be on the phone here.
That's what I'll tell him.
All right, don't be on the phone.
Yeah.
All right, guys, it's six o'clock. I'll call the meeting order. We got everybody here, so let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, regular agenda. Brenton, you didn't have any mods to that. I don't think anybody else did either, so.
No, no changes.
So I'm gonna accept the motion to accept the regular agenda as it stands.
So moved.
Second.
Chelsea makes the motion. Brian is a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Regular agenda is approved. Consent agenda. Jim, was there anything on there that we needed to know last minute that we don't know at this point?
Nope.
Anybody got any questions? Some of those pretty much standard procedure, so.
So moved.
Dave makes a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. City council minutes. Anybody see anything on there that was inaccurate or needs to be changed? If not, we'll accept the motion to accept the approval of the city council minutes. Okay, Brian makes a motion, second.
Second.
Dave does a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Who's got the sheriff's update this evening? Who wants it? Who wants to do the sheriff's update this evening?
So, I'm gonna do the monthly as usual.
You are really.
Okay.
I'll get out there and then I'll explain it.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna be doing the monthly as per the norm. Deputy Matthew King here, he's gonna present the yearly from last year. So, I'll kinda let him explain all that when he gets up here. So, last month was, I know the, we don't like to use the word in this industry, but a little quiet. So I was fortunate enough to be able to do some more traffic related things. As far as the calls for service, there was two crashes. One was an animal down on County fourteen, a deer crash. The other one was, oh, here on Main Street by Big Erbs. A vehicle appeared to have some mechanical issues with its brakes, wasn't able to stop and crashed into it, sounded like a snowmobile trailer. There were some minor injuries with that, but the, those were the two crashes. So yeah, as I was explaining, otherwise, yeah, there wasn't anything really of anything to note. I was able to work on some of the traffic complaints I've heard as far as speeding on Wall and then the four-way stop out here on Wall and Main Avenue. I also did emphasize a lot of parking stuff. My stance on that is, is I'm kinda giving everybody a fair shake. I know there's a lot of new citizens who aren't aware of the night parking ordinances. So I've been, you know, giving a lot of warnings. Anytime we run a plate or add it to a call, it's attached to that. So if I run that plate again, it's gonna pop up those other parking complaints and I'll be able to see that they've been warned or not before. So that's kinda how I've done it. So as you can see, I issued twenty-six parking warnings and there was three citations. Those were three vehicles that I'd seen were warned previously by Deputy Krause or Deputy Beam, so. Really, yeah, nothing really too much to note. Does anybody have any questions on specifics?
Like you said, there really wasn't anything that stood out or any patterns that are looking bad.
There was no big, no, there was a, I think it was the general manager for the new school over here had called and thought he was missing some construction. Supplies, like drywall and stuff. I've spent a pretty good time watching it over there. I've got some of my strategic places. I like to kinda sit in the outskirts and kinda watch what's going on. I haven't noticed anything. To me, that seems a little unusual. Most of the burglaries we see at constructions are gonna be tools, equipment, that kinda thing.
Sure.
We are keeping an eye on it. So yeah, that was, that was the only theft or burglary related type call there was last month, so.
No issues, snowmobile wise?
No, I'm, like I said, last meeting, I talked to quite a few there right at the get-go, but now I haven't seen basically any out and about. That, that would help, yeah. But yeah, I, I guess I don't have any concerns as of right now. I guess there, if you have any opinions on the traffic or parking things, if you guys, any questions or concerns on that stuff?
No, I think it's just probably just to keep what you're doing on that, so people get used to slowing down.
Yep.
We just don't want any incidents by the school.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and just to note, I'm not sure how Deputy Krause did it before. You'll notice like on traffic stops, it says thirty-four, but then there's thirty-five warnings and seven citations. Sometimes, you know, you get, people get a ticket and a warning, so that's why there's, they don't add up exactly to thirty-four, or they might get two warnings or something. Same thing with the parking stuff. There might be multiple vehicles parked in front of a house, so that's why those numbers don't exactly add up equally, so.
And I think the other one too is watching Wall Avenue because there's still quite a few that like to move a little quicker to get home and who understand some of that, but still, we gotta be careful with it.
Yeah, like I said, I've, I made quite a few stops on Wall this last month. I am working with, Deputy King's gonna touch on a little bit. We have a gentleman now who's doing more data related stuff and can plot things on a map and stuff. And we're working together with that gentleman to see if maybe we can do something like that and incorporate it into the monthly reports where, where these traffic things are occurring and.
Strategic.
Yep, so we're, we're working on some of that to get you guys some.
No, that'd be good.
More info, so.
No, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you for the report.
All right, so it's Deputy King, he'll do the yearly report.
Well, I was coming down here to assist these guys with their, their yearly. Do you have that one?
I'm just wondering if you, did you email it or?
I'll look here.
Oh.
Ross?
You emailed it to?
He might, Ross may.
Yeah, Ross said he was gonna try to take care of this. He just needed me to come down here to try to help explain what we're looking at.
So go ahead.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't see it.
Trying to catch up? If he's got it, no?
Last one I got from Krause was November.
Okay. Yep, you wanna send a quick email? So, when you guys get to see this, I can't plug this thing, can I? Okay, so I, with this, there's a little bit of a new look to it, so you'll notice that on the cover page, a little bit of a different change. The other thing that, the history behind this is, I was in Castleton-Mapleton for two years, so I started trying to build that, so you kinda got to see that. And then, like Deputy Keller was talking about with more kind of data and some maps, you're gonna see some maps. And to try to tailor your guises different than Castleton-Mapleton, like Mapleton doesn't wanna see, you know, the rural portion of where the deputy could get sent to. They just want around their town. Castleton likes to see all of it. So when you guys get to see this, I'm looking for feedback on how we can tailor these maps of what you're, what you're looking for. So, since you guys don't have this yet, Ross puts in here, to say twenty-twenty was a difficult, unique and challenging year would be incredible. Would be incredibly an understatement. What our communities and our nation has faced during the COVID-nineteen pandemic has truly remarkable and will not soon be forgotten. However, the people of Horace have shown their preservation in hard times and banded together as communities. There were no incidents in town related to anyone disregarding others' safety while in public, which is a testament to the dedication everyone in Horace has shown getting through these trying times quickly, efficiency, and without pause. Our office is looking forward to building upon our partnership with the city of Horace and its residents in twenty-twenty-one. Horace is an ever-expanding community and presents unique challenges and situations for our office. We are looking forward to facing those challenges and help, helping to continue build strong community through partnership, transparency, community engagement, and hard work. So that's gonna be the second page of your yearly report. The next part, if you guys could see this, way more than what you guys could see, I added more things on there. And it's mixed up between eighteen and nineteen and twenty. You're gonna see right away, calls for service are gonna be, for twenty-twenty is gonna be nineteen eighty-three and twenty-nineteen was twenty-one eighty-three and two thousand eighteen, twenty-four, twenty-five. The main drop has been COVID. Your main area that you'll see in this report is you're gonna see COPs. Community-based, that's where the officers are getting out, talking with the public, engaging with the public. Bar checks getting out, that's kinda still that officer initiated getting out, we're not being called, officers are trying to do that. Building checks, they're gonna be a little bit on the low side of things because if, and I'm guilty of this as well, but if I'm up by the church and I'm gonna do building checks up on the north side of town, up there, you have all of those businesses, which could be an individual check. I mark them on my one spreadsheet. We're working on trying to get all of our spreadsheets in. The one program that I have just doesn't show it. So you're gonna be a little light on those. Traffic stop, traffic stops in the area or around the area, and it kinda gives you the hours for towns, or hours for the town. And then we get into our, our maps. Did you get that sent off? Okay, so in the maps, I don't know what's best to kinda show you what I'm looking at here. I can walk around and show you guys the first map, then come back up, show you the second map and vice versa. How would you like to see this? Cause this, this portion is kind of why I'm down here, just to find out what you guys are looking for and kind of like a heat map per se. It kinda puts a bubble with a number over it, and if there is just one call for service, it just shows a telephone. And it kinda gives you an area of where we're, our, your deputies are being, responding to. So any ideas of? I would say, yeah, you probably just need to. Just walk, I'll just. If he can get it sent, that's great, but.
There's one more measure that I'm thinking about is, is response time.
Okay.
So that's just gonna be the normal town, where, and then we can expand out. And so it kinda shows us just, just broader to all these people.
What's the Horace deputy could be sent to? And then. Going down to the next one, even more of a broader view. Because the city limits of Horace. It was low about a hundred and sixteen.
Yep, yep.
So do you like all three of those maps?
Yeah, I do.
I do.
Yeah, I think we're, I think it'd be helpful for us to see that.
We could, we could plug in here. It won't be a feed for everybody to see, but everybody in the room here would be able to see it.
Okay. Now, each do you like?
Do some plug in? That's interesting.
Or you just?
I need this Horace, Horace extension.
Right.
And have three.
Here.
Those, try different sources, they're different.
And here, doing it on my side, so let's try this one. There we go. So, sorry for everybody that's looking at my back right now, but here's kinda the new look of the yearly report. And then, kind of a general statement that I read off, and then here's that yearly report of what we're looking at for differences in kinda the numbers. If we're looking at mental health, I just kinda put that as. Thanks. The mental health aspect is you're suicidal or the people are just trying to have that, so that number definitely went down in twenty-twenty. Suspicious calls, they all kinda stay about the same. Medical assist, and then right here, starting at bar checks down to your traffic stops, they're all gonna be the officer initiated, of the officer either getting out, speaking with the public, or moving forward. The first map is gonna be just kind of the totality of the calls. So it's kind of wide range here, it's coming around sixteen, all the way up to sixty-fourth. City limits kinda bounce back and forth, in and out, so that's why it's so big. And this is kind of where asking for, to move forward, do you like this map, not like this map? And that's what we're kind of looking for as we explain this new system. Here's kind of zoomed in. Now we're down a little bit closer. Not all of the town up north, but we're zooming in so we can kinda see where some of the calls are happening, taking place. And then, including rural. So you got everything that the Horace deputy might get sent out to. Out to the, the firing range or the shooting park, just on the outskirts of town. Dispatch sees it and will send the Horace deputy. So if you don't see them, just right in this immediate area, they're probably hanging out pretty close. So with, to go on to the next part, does everybody kinda like the three maps? Yeah. Going forward. Yeah, it's great.
I'm curious, what other options, what other view options do we have? Is it just zoom in and zoom out or?
Kind of, I mean, we could break it down to calls.
I'd say.
Like I did.
Type of calls or anything like that.
Right, I did that for Arthur because Arthur's been kind of my test site to see what we're gonna prioritize the contract communities.
Yes.
I went out and I printed every one of, it's up on the screen now, so it might be on your guys' screen. So every, so all calls for service, which you saw on the first map, then I broke it down to traffic crashes. So it was traffic crashes, and I broke down each one. I had thirteen maps, fourteen maps printed out. And then, city of Arthur's like, ooh, that, that's a little much.
Yeah.
I'm like, okay, so we could break down, you know, where the traffic stops happening. We can break that down and add that half into your, if you like.
That might be nice, is where the traffic stops.
Yeah, I, I think I'd be interested in that, and furthermore, maybe even into an accident, you know, location so that we can pinpoint if there's traffic.
Right. If there's concerns with the roads that we need to be aware of, we may need to adjust traffic speeds and things.
This map is a little, is very generalized. It doesn't really do a lot for me.
This, this one's, oh, I mean, you have four hundred and ninety-five calls just in one.
Cause I mean, this could be like ambulance calls as well.
Nope, this is just Castleton. So this. Like you have.
We do have a medical, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like it could be somebody's hurt or medical, which, you know, obviously anywhere that there's a house, that's something common to see or, you know, it's just not something we can pinpoint to solve a problem necessarily.
Right, this general map right here, what you're looking at is just everything lumped in that we're gonna be sent to. So the four hundred and ninety-five is a mixture of COP, traffic stops, juvenile complaints, bar checks, just everything is lumped into that. This system is an interactive system, but I can't use it off, off of our network. Otherwise, you could click on those bubbles and I could tell you exactly what the four hundred and ninety-five things are, but I'd be trying to get everything to work, that's just a little bit on the outside.
Is there a way to view like the top three, you know?
If, if you're looking for the top three, then that's just us looking at your top three. Same here, we'll add these maps into it.
Well, when you say top three, top three what? So I'm, I'm wondering.
Types of calls.
Severity or. Can we spread it out to the rest?
Yeah, if you wanna do top three, it's probably gonna be like building checks and, you know, a lot of self-generated stuff, that's probably not gonna be a lot of interest to you.
Yeah, what, what's gonna help us the most? I mean, as far as a, a, a public generated call, you know, we talked about traffic stops obviously as one. We can pinpoint speeding areas.
Yeah, so there's all the different types of calls right there. Really, I think maybe as a council, you guys go through and pick the ones that you feel are most important to the city, yeah, probably traffic.
Crashes, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I said, medical assist, crashes are probably those two that are, are top. I would say it would be highest priority, cause that, that's where people care about, okay, if I make a nine-one-one call, you know, and that's what I was thinking, is if I make a nine-one-one call, what's my average response time for that nine-one-one call? Or, you know, what areas are we seeing the majority of the crashes that are happening on, on our road? So if there's actionable data that we can say, all right, there's, seem to be an issue on the corner of Wall and, and County seventeen, I'm just picking an intersection. If that's where the majority of the crashes are happening, then we can use that data to then say, okay, what are we gonna do to try and make that intersection safer?
Right.
Also, the, the thefts and the burglary, I think would be combining those maybe into one map and seeing those.
Okay. I like the traffic stop ones though, cause that tells you the location where the traffic stop occurred, right?
Right.
Right, and for them, it's.
Within a certain range.
Right, within a certain range, because if you're, if they, if you're north of Wall, or, yeah, north of Wall and seventeen going towards Casey's and they say, well, it's gonna put it back to that intersection. So going down, you, that's why the majority of them are gonna be looped. So it all depends on how the officer calls it out or the dispatch places it. Will start creating your, your bubble. Cause if they're pretty close, you won't get this, the phones, you'll start getting a bubble in that area.
Okay, so like for me, one of the things that I like to see when we've been doing this is the trends. Like last year, year to now, what are some of the things that have been increasing that we might have to watch in the future as far as the trend analysis go? That's what I like to see, and that's what, that's what I would like to see, like in all this stuff, is that, you know, from a year standpoint, we had just like net up, net down. That type of thing. And, cause that just gives us all an idea of what we need to focus on possibly for the next year and watch.
Okay, so are you just talking from the previous year?
For right now, I mean, we, obviously we could go back, but I mean, right now, I'm just thinking like twelve month. I'm, I'm caught rolling, but I mean, at least a twelve month type of analysis, that would give us at least an idea of what we're looking at. I mean, the town's growing like it is, these things are gonna fluctuate and change, and what I wanna do is be able to try and stay ahead of that a little bit, so we know what we need to focus on.
Along with this yearly report that you've seen here, you guys are also gonna get quarterly reports. So they'll start rolling out to like first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter. They'll have the fourth quarter before the yearly, because I need to wait for the final numbers to come in, but it kinda gives you an idea of, you know, you have your monthly reports, now you have, all right, how did this quarter go? Like where, how are we comparing this?
Yeah, definitely.
So that's all gonna be new for all of the communities this year, or the contract communities that are gonna get quarterly reports to go through. And then just getting your guys' feedback of how you'd like to see your yearly report, then we can try to tailor things to see it.
Well, one measure that we've obviously had discussions around is, okay, at what point is it gonna be necessary to have a third deputy covering the city? And if, if, you know, you two essentially, you have two people rotating shifts, is that sufficient? And at what point, you know, what is that measure that's gonna say, all right, we've reached a threshold where we need to have that third deputy to help cover the city? You know, that, that would be an interesting measure for us to say what, what key aspects are, are being used by other communities that we should be looking at to say, this is a, you know, we've reached a decision point, there's too many calls for services and so forth on a given shift day, whatever it is, that, that we need to justify that, that third deputy. So that, that, to me, that would be an interesting measure.
All right, I'll try to, I'll bring that back.
I mean, that's a hard measure, right?
Right.
Cause any given day, that could fluctuate a lot.
Right.
Right? So, but yeah, so it's basically that nine-one-one service. When somebody has a medical call or there is a crash, what's that average response time? And if our average response time is starting to creep up, is that, is that a measure that is used? I don't know. Some, some.
Or is it the population?
Is it population? Is it response, what, what measure is it?
I mean, a lot of things they do use the population basis.
Okay.
That's a lot what they go by, but I think the response time, I'm not sure if Deputy King can figure that out, the number of average response time or not. Go to the ground and we're.
Well, you guys have a good insight of how things are working for you. Obviously, you're the ones out there, so if you have a perspective that we maybe need to hear about.
Yeah, and it depends, and there's two of us right now, so there isn't twenty-four hour coverage.
And.
Whereas, a lot of times if myself or Deputy Krause aren't here, another guy will pop in and.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, is that how we could measure it too, is how many are addressed by, quote, our contract guys versus not? And that would help us either, and, and it wouldn't be perfect, because I know you might have been called out somewhere and somebody else had to come in, so. And maybe that is a slight gauge to say that seventy-five percent of the calls or eighty percent of the calls are covered by you guys, so it seems okay. There's a small amount that does happen, but if that percentage starts to goes down because you're either, already had a call, and then another call comes in and we don't have multiple, you know, that would be a measurement.
So like, for example, the medical assists, are pretty much all of those a nine-one-one dispatch call?
Yes.
So maybe that could be, you know, if, if you aggregated all those, how many of those are nine-one-one calls? Where you said, you know, is it more than thirty-four, I'm assuming, or the sixty-four, right, for this year was sixty-four? But is it more than that? Do you guys get other nine-one-one calls for service?
And, well, and it's, that's not, there's never gonna be a perfect measurement, because medical assists to how, you know, depending on what it is, we respond differently to it. I don't know if it's, you know, just somebody who's having a headache or that headache and they wanna get checked out, or not to go, like, there's irons flying there, you know? I went to one the other night where guys having diabetic issues and was unresponsive, I, I went like, the sirens, that one I got through pretty quick. So again, that's not gonna be a perfect measurement either, but it will be, I think, something to go out with.
And that type of call, the ambulance would also be dispatch?
Yeah, I'll tell you, pretty much all medicals in Horace is, we get dispatched, a horse fire and then an ambulance will also be a dispatch. And on that particular one there, I was first on scene by, gosh, probably almost ten minutes, so a horse fire and an ambulance arrived, so.
But you guys are typically first on scene.
Correct.
Before they have an ambulance.
And we are all EMR certified, so we're emergency medical responders, so basically we have the same training. We do go through the same training as like your rural line ambulance crews, so the Kinder volunteer group, we go through a lot of the same training as they do.
Sure.
That's something our office feels is important to the people of Castleton.
A lot of volunteers that have to come from home and.
Correct, yes, and get a page on their phones. They gotta respond from their house to the fire hall, to the call, so there's some time there.
Anybody else got any other questions?
Good stuff.
No, very good.
Love the numbers.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
So yeah, I will take it back and then I'll let Keller and Krause know how much I can, you know, break down your measurements that you asked for and see if I can pull those quickly or not, otherwise it might just, almost be unrealistic of trying to go through and then treasure hatch every single call on.
Sure.
Hundred, two hundred calls for service, they'll just take time in and of itself from.
Yep.
Time dispatch, time to arrive. So we'll try to, I'll try to see what I can pull off of my little program and let these guys know so they can address some of that. And then we'll just continue to build on this to work on for your, next year's yearly report. And then these guys will give you guys a quarterly report. Okay?
I think in the meantime, I think would be a good idea for them to sit down, maybe pick out something more important.
Oh, yeah. If, we could, we could do that, then I mean, and then we could let you guys know, if we can email you and just say, this is kinda what we're looking at as far as the top three and then some of the trending, you know, that kinda stuff. We could let you guys know that and then we can take it from there.
Stops, traffic crashes for sure, and then burglary theft, I don't know, that's kind of on there, and then whatever else you guys wanna try to add or something, just let me.
That's what I was thinking, maybe trying to categorize some of those, you know, like traffic related and, you know, maybe medical or, or, you know, or burglary or theft, those, you know, having those, those kind of, what do you, what do you call them, they're like felony almost, right? I don't know, just, whatever you classify them, whether they're trying to theft or property.
Property crimes.
Or property crimes versus, right, traffic, that would be good. Kind of those kind of classifications, that might be a good way to summarize some of that.
Okay.
So, but let's be fair, we'll put something together and email it to us, opposed to just chatter tonight, so that they've got something solid to go off of, so.
Thank you.
No, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, it's just, you know, things are so dynamic, because when we talk about what's going on, at this point in time, a year from now, there's gonna be more folks in town.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the thing, we just have to keep an eye on the trends that are gonna change because of that. Some will stay static, I think some will move, so.
Yeah, you can email, that's all for Deputy Krause, you and people. King here and get her, her attuned here and.
Excellent. Well, thank you guys, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming down, appreciate it.
Very vocal.
Okay, Jim, you're up now. Move on to seven here.
First thing we have on the agenda is a resolution approving the preliminary adjournment report for the Terragarden's second edition. As you may recall, Terragarden's second edition is a continuation of the Terragarden's first edition. Well, east of here, approximately seven and a half street east. It's a residential subdivision consisting of approximately sixty single-family residents. Will be public infrastructure as far as sanitary sewer services, water main services, fire hydrants, curb and gutter, asphalt streets. Storm sewer will just be piping, pond, and a lift station, were constructed as part of the first edition. The petition for improvements was supplied by Peaceful Plains Two Incorporated, the owner of the property. This will be a hundred percent special assessment project with no regional benefits. These will purely be. This will be a hundred percent special assessment project with no regional benefits, these will purely be local benefits, so. There is a breakdown of potential special assessments based on methodology of the last couple re-filled special assessments that have been done. Um I included just a summary of that in the uh body of the report too, but uh just for. Very preliminary of a maximum of forty-nine thousand, a minimum of twenty-eight thousand, average of thirty-seven thousand, the median around thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, so. These are very preliminary, it might change due to what comes with the special assessment policy. And it might, there might be some developer input as far as we go on this one, but this is a way of at least getting it out there is the way that the city typically breaks out these special assessments. So it's not, it's preliminary phase, they're out there for for discussion and review, so.
So this includes paving of the Wall Avenue and Park Drive to get out to that area?
Correct, yes, so right now.
That's why this area is included?
Yep, so right now, Wall Avenue is paved with seven and a half street, that'll continue out to, I forget what they're gonna call that on the.
That'll be named, that'll be paved to here or will be paved to here?
No, just to the entrance, through the entrance, and then Park Drive will be extended, so right now, Park Drive is paved up to seven and a half, that'll be extended to. I forget what the, what the street is, but.
So right in the middle again?
Yeah. Yep, so, uh the cost estimate was provided by the developer, the city put, and staff, we put on the soft costs. Typically what it is for the business in the city and that's where we came with the project cost of two, over two point two, two million. So, pretty much falls in line with the with the first edition and that's what they were, what they were expecting, so.
Any questions, concerns? This is pretty much a boilerplate, cause it's a continuation of the other two, so.
Yeah, I have a question that's maybe a little long, it is a little off topic, but in these new developments. What do we see, if anything, for trees? Is it all just developer driven?
Currently, it's developer driven, if there is an area that the developer would like to put in trees, even through the amenities or through a landscaping plan, that's typically where it is. Um this um developer typically landscapes around entrances. And if there's a homeowner association, I don't think there's any HOA lots in this one, but um this is a kind of spin up of the guys that did Lost River. And Lost River's got the trees and the HOA lots, this one is not as, it's a little more entry level in the subdivision, so there isn't as much put into the landscape. Because when we look through Lost River Fifth, and Lost River First through Fourth, the trees and landscaping and all that, it added a substantial cost to the project. In order to keep the project cost lower, especially lower, it's something that pays, doesn't always get added, so. It is up to the homeowner once they feel able to put in the whole of our trees in that.
So do we um in the past with the, like the developer agreements then would be, or it'd just be in their um covenants? With the trees, so we don't ever see anything, so basically, we could have a large development like this with absolutely no requirements for trees whatsoever.
Residential developments are required to have boulevard streets, but anything else they're not required to have, and then whatever the park district comes up with. So the city does currently have an ordinance in place that requires boulevard trees for residential developments, now whether the city applies that to these new developments. Uh I'm not sure what's going on with that, cause I know there's been discussion on getting that forestry committee back together. To make sure that 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 ordinance is being enforced in the new developments.
So we have it in the ordinance, but we don't necessarily enforce it because for, I think, that would take money and resources that we don't necessarily have.
Well, the city has the forestry uh fee that's that's tacked on, so.
That we started, but it's still building and there's not much necessarily in there yet, from what I understand.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's in the.
Well, I don't believe that that is the goal, is to quit trees and people's boulevards more, more public and. Trees that go away and we have to replace, right, so, right, that would be more of a requirement, homeowner would put at least. By ordinance, one or two trees in a boulevard or whatever the statement is, right?
No, it's the developer, when the developer develops an area, he is supposed to be ensuring that trees go in. That's a requirement in the, in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so it's developed, you're saying it's driven by the developer, so he would have to then, he or she would have to put.
Well, he's the, so he's the enforcement is what you're saying, that he's responsible for getting those trees.
No, actually, the the zoning administrator is the enforcement to make sure that they're actually living up to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I got you.
And that, that, that means they require, they require a uh. Basically a drawing showing what what their intention is.
Ti- typically what you'll see is the developer will require it within their covenants. Because if you have those trees put in before a home is put in, then the contractors are working around the trees and. Likely going to destroy those trees before they even can be benefit to the homeowner, so. A lot of times what you'll see is the developer put within their covenants or require it within, you know, the law sale or however they choose to do that. But they'll require, hey, you have to have boulevard trees within there, cause the city requires it, and then it's up to that, those parties to enforce that. That's typically what happens now, could we come back and go say, the city from the angle within ordinances, I believe we'd be able to, but we have to look into it. And I think we'd probably have to revisit that ordinance a little bit.
Just for curiosity's sake, I lived in West Fargo years ago and they had some very specific requirements for boulevard trees. And they had methods and means of withholding funds until such time as you could prove that you planted those trees and then they would give you the remainder of those funds. Do we have something similar in our ordinance? I I'm not.
Species to be planted?
Yes.
Yes?
As far as withholding.
Is anybody familiar with like what what's going on in Prairie View with trees? Is is it?
Prairie View or Terragarden?
Well, like just because Prairie View has been there for a while?
So Prairie View's got some smaller spruce, evergreens kind of clusters on the four corners. And there were um maybe a couple other odd trees installed on the end caps to that center island. I don't know much more beyond that, but if you go to the practical patient map, if you go back up to that. You'll see on here, there's an area that is, next one, the area. So you can see that large area there with the sidewalk through it, right now, there are trees that were planted as part of Terragarden's first edition. To kind of break up, or break up the flatness, so to speak, of that linear park, and those are smaller spruce type, if I remember correctly. So and then that park, I think it's up to this somewhere, it's up a bit right now.
I think if there's a way to hold funds and to hold people to this that doesn't create more work for us, it just is a matter of um, you know. I mean, obviously, it would be time spent making sure that these houses have their trees, but as in a the simplest way where there's funds held somehow. Or if it's in the special assessment district somehow, but I think that would be really important, cause you see these developments that are. You know, fifteen years old, that are just empty and it's pretty sad and I mean, it'd be a shame to.
Lucas, you had something wanted out on that?
We also had discussion on holding up on the certificate of occupancy and making a requirement that the homeowner has to put in the trees. They don't, or if it's like winter, then hold off until spring, you know, when it's an actual good time to plant. So that was another discussion of, you know, do you wanna do it that way, or do you wanna do like West Fargo does where they require a deposit and then your deposit gets returned to you once you do plant the trees?
And I believe there's a timeframe attached to that, I don't recall if it was a year or two years, but they gave you a reasonable amount of time to go out, seek the trees. Get the trees installed and then obviously call someone, have them come out and inspect it and then release your deposit. We don't wanna burden, you know, the city with with more red tape necessarily, but I agree with Chelsea, I think that the the look of our developments and the. You know, keeping horse beautiful and attractive is extremely important, so there might be something that can be done there.
I mean, to be honest, I think that would be money well spent, because, you know, trees take a while to grow. And we can't force people after the fact to go back and plant trees, so this is our chance to have that setting.
So what, you, being it's off topic there, it'd be.
Sorry.
Uh focusing, just having a conversation in tree ordinance, and we could bring that back up, you know, for another discussion.
Another discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
Just wanna make sure we bring it back to the discussion of.
Yep.
This item, and we can bring that back.
Have we got any other, any other questions about the approving a preliminary engineering report?
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering report.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, give me a second.
Okay, I'll wait a second.
Sarah does a second, fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number eight, Brenton, you got that one?
Um this is just more of an update for the council, uh property owners within Horace should have received a letter. Uh either Saturday or today, most likely, uh talks about uh special assessment policy, development open house. What that is, is this, uh we're trying to have a handful meetings in regard, for the public. In regard to the special assessment policy and drafting it, this opportunity for residents to give input. On what they would like to see different, we're gonna look at, here's what century code requires. What do you wanna see? Are there things above and beyond? Uh city our size is not required to have a special assessment policy, but we figure this would be wise to have, it will make it a lot easier to give some more predictability. Uh so folks will be able to see, you know, or have a better idea of how much their assessment could potentially be if they. If there's a project that happens in the area nearby them. Uh like I said, this is really to focus on, what would you like to see different, what do you wanna see, what do you like, what you don't like about the process? About how assessments are handled, um it's more of a feedback, it's not. Do you complain about, oh, I was assessed for this project, it's the, give us feedback on how we can do this better. We wanna have a fair of a process as possible, and we also wanna make sure that we meet the requirements century code. And also keep it realistic of what we can and can't do, so uh this, like I said, this is the first meeting, we're planning on having a few meetings. Uh that involve the public, um but like I said, we're trying to get feedback as much as possible, this will be this Thursday evening from six to eight. Uh at the senior center, we'll also have it available uh by Zoom. If anybody wants to participate online, they need to go through that Zoom platform though. Uh because that's where we'll be monitoring for the feedback through the chat window that way, so. Just, I know some folks sometimes would use Facebook too, but we wanna keep the conversation in one area, so we make sure that the conversation is there in particular, in particular, so. Um also, if there's any comments in general or folks have any comments of, hey, we'd really like to see. You know, this step done or something else done, if they wanna provide that feedback ahead of time, the email address is provided in the letter also. Uh they could send emails to that, if they can't attend, like I said, they could provide feedback that way. And this is just more of a providing feedback of how we could do this better, that's what we're focusing on, so.
So we're encouraging, we're encouraging everybody to provide feedback on this, you know. Um so we can have a policy going forward, so everybody knows what we're doing and how this is gonna work, so.
So is that document, the draft document, gonna be posted for people to review?
There is not a draft document this time, this is just.
So it's just a general discussion or is there a presentation that people?
There'll, there'll be some uh very, very short presentation, but it's gonna be just more of a conversation, just trying to get feedback of. Okay, here's what century code requires us to do. We're not required to this policy, but this is, this policy is gonna outline how, how we conduct the specials. How, you know, gives us a general guideline and provides predictability, so what we're looking for is, okay, do you want? Uh, you know, like letters to go out, okay, at what point do you want to see letters, what should the layers include? You know, and I'm just using that as an example, not specific. But we're just looking for overall feedback of how would they do special assessments different? We've done the equivalent units approach before, do they like that, do they don't? How would they modify that, you know, any ideas that people have, that's what we're looking for. And we're just trying, well, I'd be able to take that feedback, provide to our consultants that we have working with us on this policy. And staff, you go, okay, here's what we're hearing, before we even go and get this policy all drafted up. How can we address some of these issues upfront, not guaranteeing that every comment is gonna be changed entire policy. Um, cause we're right, you're right, have conflicting comments at times, so I wanna, you know, make sure, but we're trying to get as much feedback as possible from residents. From that public meeting platform, so, and like I said, having it virtually via Zoom. And in person gives opportunity for whatever level of comfort that you prefer to participate with, so.
Long story short, if you have an issue with special assessments, this is your chance to get out there, say something. And bring it to our attention and and coming with gripes is, I think, a good thing. But also provide solutions, thoughts on what else we can do differently. I know me personally, special assessments were a source of some heartburn over the last couple of years, but after really sitting down. And spending the time and going through the preparation to take this temporary seat on the council. Um I've learned a lot about the process and about the fact that I, I really only got hit for um two special assessments. Even though we opened up, how many districts this last year alone?
Uh last year, seven.
So I I I would encourage people to make yourselves known, this is your chance, if you have concerns, to come down. Give some feedback and Brenton, it's my understanding this is an ongoing thing, this is also posted to the city website, so if anyone didn't receive the letter. It's on the website, the email, to get information is on the website, the communication is there, right? And that was one of the biggest concerns that I've heard over the course of the last year or two, was we got hit with this, we didn't know it was coming. Here it is, guys, it's here.
And that's why, that's why we did the letters, so even if you're not looking at the website, Facebook, uh. Or, you know, you have the mail, there's also, we'll probably have, I don't know how much information we'd have in horse happenings and such, you more just. Hey, try and get feedback here or there, but uh there, there's many avenues of the communication, not just one, so.
Okay, all right, anything else on that one, Brenton?
Nope.
We've got it squared ways, beat the informations out there.
Yep.
Want everybody to participate. Okay, Jim, number nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, number nine is an item we talked about two weeks ago, this is neighborhood de-watering. Hopefully, we've all had time to review the memo and review the proposal that was provided by Water Smith. Um little background, excessive groundwater is an ongoing problem in the various neighborhoods. Uh becoming more and more challenging to maintain in Chestnut Ironwood, Dream Fields and the Almanard additions. Uh groundwater problems are causing infiltration, it's all sewer, sanitary sewer, street deterioration of some pump discharge, potting on the street, ice buildup in the winter, so. Um discussion of public works, one thing we uh try, our proposing duty is installing a neighborhood well or a series of neighborhood wells. Try to draw the ground up, try to draw the groundwater down below some pumps. And kind of limit the amount that has to get pumped through either the sewer system or into onto the streets and inferior the streets, so. We've got a proposal from Water Smith, Water Smith, this is, has done this in Kindred, this has been for many years, it's been done in Kindred, so. Um this is to do three wells, one in each of those areas, and it's basically just to test, determine where the groundwater is. And to determine what the rate of groundwater that can be pumped out of these, of these wells is, so. There's a potential that we'll need to have another one or another well or two put in to do any significance, but we have to figure out what's there first, so. Uh Chestnut Ironwood is the biggest one right now, and that, that area, the city has a lift station, a sanitary sewer lift station where we're anticipating to put this well. It's the low spot, all the piping goes in that low spot, and there is sanitary sewer, or storm sewer, excuse me, within probably twenty-five to fifty feet of. Where this well would be located, so we should be able to discharge it right into the storm sewer out into the river from there, so. Um Almanard and the other, and uh Dream Fields are a little bit more, I mean, they've got a pond in Dream Fields that we can discharge into, there's some storm sewer in that one too. Almanard is all surface drainage, so we're gonna have to uh think a little bit more on that one as to where to put that water, so we're not causing more damage. I mean, there's already enough water standing up there, we're not trying to make the problem better, not worse, so.
Right.
Uh this would just be authorizing, getting going on it and getting some information, getting some existing conditions. And uh trying to lower the water table in those areas.
Okay, yeah, I know, and we kinda went over this last time around too, so. Any questions on this one, guys? I mean, it's something we should probably be doing up there, and I'll see if we can get that, get to, get it down, so we're not.
This is a, this is a cheap option to make a significant difference, try and save some money.
How long's that been going on down in Kindred?
I don't remember.
I don't remember what you said. It's been many years.
Yeah, I mean, it's been.
It's been many years, and it's been noticeable.
Yeah.
Uh, when, when Rich turns off the pumps, some pumps start pumping, and when he turns it back on.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's kind of proven the point that it does work.
Yeah.
You know?
That's the thing, if we can reduce the load on the sanitary, that's our, that's our goal.
Lift station number four pumps a lot, and it pumps a lot in the spring, it pumps a lot in the fall, and in the summertime in rain events, so we know there's clear water getting into it, and by eliminating that clear water, hopefully, we can, we can keep moving.
Russ, what you, what you got?
I just got one, do they put a level switch in on these then, for on and off?
I'm not sure how they, how they did that.
No, because a normal well runs by pressure.
Right, so, we, we have to see what we have for flows first.
Okay.
See if it's even something we can do.
So, this is part one of a multi-part process, so this is the test well. Once the flows are determined, then it's determined if in fact a pump is needed or not, and where so that would be drained.
Correct.
Correct. Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, but I mean, this is probably our, our cheapest way to determine whether this is going to do it.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the quote for Matikowski well.
It'd be through Water Smith.
Water Smith.
Oh, it's Water Smith?
It'd be through Water Smith.
So, Water Smith to proceed with, uh, would they actually develop or drill these wells yet this winter?
Uh, he said if the weather isn't terribly, terribly cold, they would, but, um, we'll have, we'll have to see what.
Love to see how things go with that.
Because Saturday looks like it's not supposed to be very warm.
We'll have to have a heat wave next week.
So, do we need to, well, my question is, do we need to have a not to exceed number, I mean?
I think this is, I think this is it, and we'll come back if there's anything else. So, I don't want to, let's just prove this, and then we'll come back if there's something else that comes up.
And I guess I should have asked before I started the motion, but we're running this from, sales tax?
It'd be the sales tax fund, as we brought up last meeting, uh, being the infrastructure, it's going towards infrastructure improvement, so.
Okay, so Brian made a motion to proceed, uh, can I get a second?
I will second.
Okay, Sarah does a second. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, do we need to real call for this money?
Yes.
You want me to real call, okay, Sarah?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Jim, let's get the update on engineering.
Uh, we'll go right to just the bullet items there. We've got water improvement district number twenty-two dash six, a summary of the public comment. Did prepare a memo and sent that off for your, for your review. Uh, this project was, public input was, um, requested through a virtual public input meeting, posted on YouTube and on the city's website. Uh, the public was provided for the review on December eighth, with comments being due by December twenty-first. We've received four emails, uh, five emails, four emails are from Orchard Park residents. Uh, those four were objecting to be included in the special assessment district for the project. Uh, they expressed that they were satisfied with their current water services from the, from that water company, and would no, and or would receive no benefit from the project. Two men, two residents mentioned inconsistencies with notification to be included in the improvement district, and asked what the notification requirements are. They also say they were curious how many comments were received during the improvement district. Uh, talked a little bit about funding sources and amounts. And then the last email was from an Arrow resident, her, her, um, email was on quality. And this was the replacement project, I preface that, this is the replacement in Horace proper. And, um, the answer to that one was that she just needed to wait a week and we get out the one connecting the Casper Road, so we had that. These comments are part of the process for our funding requirements. We solicit the, uh, government agencies receive comments from them, we solicit the public, you can receive comments from them. Um, these comments are typically addressed in the, either the facility plan or just noted in the facility plan if they're more of the, uh, statement type, right? Not necessarily a comment, so. Um, I did include them for your, for your reference, I don't think we need to read them all right now, we did summarize them. So, that was from improvement district twenty-two dash six. The recommendation from the state water commission subcommittee for funding the preliminary engineering on that project goes before the state water commission next Thursday, with the recommendation to approve the preliminary engineering on it. There was some, we had requested all the preliminary and the construction dollars. At that meeting, they were very consistently approving or recommending for approval, just the preliminary dollars. And then they asked that applicants come back once they're closer to construction to get the construction dollars for that. So, our intent is to make it on the next state water commission meeting, ask for the construction dollars, so. Plans are progressing, the facility plan is done, preliminary engineering report, just I put a couple of these comments in there and included, and we push forward, so. Um, on the funding front, I did get a call from the Corps of Engineers today on their section five ninety-four funds. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, that cycle is closed, there is no more projects being accepted for that. But for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, they are accepting until, uh, the first of August. And that's a seventy-five twenty-five cost share, very similar to, uh, the state water commission as far as how things get paid. There is no limit on it, there is no prioritization as far as the projects, it's purely, uh, um, it seems somewhat informal. Uh, they told me that you just request, request, send in all the information you have, and then the Corps of Engineers prioritizes the project and sends it off to Congress. Congress is the one who picks which projects get, get funded. So, one of the areas that they do look at is the median income, which tends to hurt us here. They, they, she did tell me they prefer to favor the lower median incomes, just, and she said, don't not submit, but just, that is one of the things that we take into account when we, when we do these projects, so. Um, the plan right now is for all these to be constructed in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, so if it looks like something happens and we can, we get hung over into twenty-twenty-two, we'll definitely put in for it and see what we can get out of them, but. So, we are, did look into that as far as another funding source.
And we're looking at that source for other projects too, in the future, so. Isn't just our current ones that we're pursuing, we have other infrastructure projects that we'll be coming back at later on, that we'll be exploring those avenues for, because I believe this is not limited to just water, it could be like, it could be wastewater also, so. Yeah, that's the big, that's one of the big ones, is to be able to seek out funds for like wastewater improvements or, or water, so we'll be looking at both those areas.
For, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, they've received ten to twelve projects, she said, and I didn't remember and ask how many they funded. Heisman, so.
Jim, indulge me as a new member here, um, just out of curiosity, you said you had five objections, probably?
Uh, not necessarily objections, but more comments.
Comments?
Yes.
How many total residents do we have ballpark in that area?
Oh, it's, it's, uh,
It's about half.
I think it's seven fifty to thousand, maybe twelve hundred.
It, probably just a little under half, maybe forty.
And out of all those people, there were five?
Because we have a total customer base is around five hundred prop, roughly five hundred properties. So, if you take five hundred and average household, two, two and a half, they're people.
I want to ensure, number one, that we're looking at these comments, because every person's voice is important. And then, number two, that we're weighing benefits of the improvements. And it sounds to me as if this has kind of a ripple effect, right? Uh, a very positive ripple effect, but I don't want people that took the time to write letters or send emails to, to not feel like their voices are heard.
No, we've actually gotten some real good information that we didn't really know about on other projects, not these two in particular, but on some street jobs. A couple of the residents have been able to provide us with some information that was just in somebody's head and not on paper or any of the records anywhere, which is always valuable.
Good, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
No, nothing, I have just an update, so.
You guys, if anybody else got any questions?
Then those comments will be held until further discussion.
Yeah, they'll be included in the final reporting, and, and they'll be addressed if they need to be. That's all.
All right.
Okay, the next one was improvement district twenty-two dash seven, this is a connection to Casper Road. Same, same process was gone through for this one, there's a virtual public input meeting, presentation put out on the city's website and on YouTube, or a link to YouTube, uh, was placed on January sixth, twenty-twenty-one, with comments received by January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we received two emails on, uh, two emails, both from Orchard Park residents. Uh, comment number one was objected to being in the assessment district, uh, receiving no benefit. And two inconsistencies will be notified, so it's pretty similar to the, to the first project that we put out there, so. Everything that I said for funding and everything else applies to this one too, they're, they're in tandem, so. Uh, the only difference is this one is being a seventy-five twenty-five cost share with the state water commission versus a sixty-fourty, sixty-fourty, which is the replacement project. It's just in the type of project, water supply gets you, gets you a little bit better cost share on, so.
So, in both of these, they, you brought these forward to, they, they recommend approval of the, the design costs, right?
Correct.
And then after that, we choose, once we get all of that information, we bring it back to them in the actual construction.
Yes.
Costs based on our estimates, right?
Yes, so what, what I gathered on the meetings that we had listened to, those, their conference calls now due to the pandemic, is that there have been some projects where somebody will come in, ask for the money, and then it'll be years before it's spent, and they wanted to try to limit some of that, so if you're going to have, and we put right on the application, you know, uh, we're going to spend it twenty-twenty-one, I mean, it's, it's going to be a bid in May, completion in November of twenty-twenty-one. And the project before our first two was, I think, a construction of twenty-twenty-two or something like that, it was kind of thinking. And then it was, I'm assuming we'll do the same on this one, I'm assuming we'll do the same on that one, so kind of snowballed on, excuse me, onto those, so.
It's still fine, at least for, you know, towards approval on stage one, and we'll go back to stage two.
Exactly, yeah, and like I said, the plan is to get them, get the plans, or get everything as far as we can. And in discussions with the state water commission, if we have more information, submit it to them. Because they have forty-five days prior to their meeting, they want the information, so it's, it's quite a long time. But they said, keep it on the agenda, and if you get more information, submit it, submit it to them.
When is that next meeting of theirs?
Theirs is next Thursday, so February seventh, and the, and I don't think I, we've sent out, they've sent out the meeting invite yet. I'll forward it to you like I did last time, but I'm assuming it's going to be a go-to meeting like it was.
Yeah.
Last, yeah, last meeting. Yep, and then we'll get the, uh, construction put forth and on the agenda for the subcommittee or for the committee in the next meeting.
Yeah, good, okay.
Any of our, this is the state water board, so we don't have any representatives on that board?
We do, uh, well, eh, each area, there, the state's broken out into areas, so you do have a water commissioner that represents our area. Uh, we also, last week, I spoke with our legislators, so Brandy Pyle, Mike Hall, and Mark Weber. Uh, I spoke with them last week to stress the importance of this, of our projects. Uh, so they're going to be advocating for our projects, also to the state water commission members that they know. Uh, and then I'll be reaching out to our representative, I don't have his name in front of me right now, but Mike Hall reached out to me over the weekend, just letting me know who our representative is, and urged us to talk with them too, so. Uh, we'll be reaching out to them, explain what, what went on from our point of view during, uh, that committee or that smaller group meeting. Uh, so they know that we're planning on hitting the floor running and knocking these projects out this year, not next. So, if they would be willing to fund the project in, you know, in full, right off the bat in February, then that makes it a lot easier for us to hit the floor running, so, uh, we're going to stress that and also point out that, uh, there aren't, there, there's more funding than projects that are submitted. We're going to also bring that to their attention, stress that, that we have an eligible project, there's funding there. We're getting towards the end of biennium, help us out, and just, you know, sales pitch it, and just stress the need for it. And I'll invite them to come to Horace same time this week or next, and.
Show you around.
Show them what we're dealing with, so, we're more happy to do that, so I'll extend the offer to them on that too.
Breton, if you want someone to join me with that, please let me know.
Yep.
We're more than happy to go around with that.
Yep.
Show them, justify those needs.
Yep, so anyways, we'll bring that up to them.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So, last thing I have on the update is Seventy-Sixth Avenue improvements from Sixty-Third Street East to Drake Twenty-Seven, actually beyond. We met with Cas County Highway Department on Tuesday of last week to discuss. They're going to be grading and improving Seventy-Sixth Avenue to Forty-Fifth Street, then up to Fifty-Second Avenue over the next two years. I just sent you an email, Brian, with this, and I don't know if you want to bring it up or not. And they want, they asked if the city would be interested in participating with some storm sewer along Seventy-Sixth Avenue, shared use path from Seventy-Sixth Avenue, or along Seventy-Sixth Avenue from Sixty-Third Street to Cup Creek Way, and then street lining from where we left off on Sixty-Third to the east to, to Cup Creek Way. And they would include that as part of their project, it would be bid as part of their deal. If only contribution the city would have would be, would be paying for it. So, um, he did present a MOU with, with Breton and myself, and we went through it and had some comments on it. We just got it back earlier today, so they aren't going to put it out on the Cas County Commission until, um, February sixteen. And I assume we'll be doing the same at that point, but, uh, like Breton and I were talking before the meeting, it would probably be best if we, I think it's something that we want to do, I think this is the right time to do it. As you recall, from Sixty-Third to Cup Creek Way is gravel, and Cup Creek is going to be building out this, this summer, I think, so. It's something I think you should, we should really do, it's the right time to do it. Um, we'll come back with the numbers, right now, they're estimating it, their, their numbers are around three hundred and thirty-three thousand, but I think it's going to be closer to four hundred, or just a shade over four hundred thousand, just to, they're basing it off of Seventy-Sixth Avenue numbers. And that, that's a couple of years old, and there's, it's a smaller project, I mean, Seventy-Sixth Avenue, pretty big project, but.
In, in reality, though, I mean, the road will just be extended and will be the same width and everything like that.
No, they're going to widen it, so, once you have going west on County Road Six right now, so west of the roundabout is going to be going east on Seventy-Sixth Avenue, so they're going to widen it, uh, to twelve or fourteen foot lanes and then eight foot shoulders.
Okay.
And, and it's going to be, so like I said, it's going to be graded this year, and paving would happen in twenty-twenty-two, so, over two years, period, and so on.
So, they're anticipating that to be fairly major, are they?
Yeah, yeah, and they are, so that's why I just, I was curious, that's what they're going to, they're going to do, basically, I'll call it the dirt work, or their gravel work. They're going to get all that squared away and get it so it's, and then beat it up, and then start paving it.
I'll be back next year.
All right.
This could actually save us money on that portion of the project, just because we're bundling it with the other. Yes, I, we, we don't have to bid it as a separate project, and we could, you don't have to pay some of the, or we're sharing some of the mobilization fees and et cetera, so.
So, there, I was just going to say, there are quite a few projects that are being planned right now at Sixty-Fourth and Cheyenne, along there, that there is, it was identified two years ago that we need another way to Fargo, another north route that's paved, not gravel. And that's where Seventy-Sixth Avenue extension and then up to Fifty-Second comes into play, so. Um, for, for the city to just completely say, no, we don't want any part of this, I think, the construction's going to happen in the next three years.
Well, again, it saves money in the long run, otherwise, we're going to have to cover some of that stuff, and that'd be silly. Russ, yeah?
Are they going to, uh, put new culverts in for Drake Twenty-Seven at this time?
They are.
Yes.
Yep, it's, uh, I believe two box culverts, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think that was part of the, the game plan, was to get that road in shape, so they could pave it the following year, so they're going to do all that improvements to it, from what we understood.
And this prepares us if there's any other upgrades work on County Seventeen shut down, this becomes our detour, correct? You know, to allow people to get into town, so.
That happens in twenty-twenty-three.
We don't know when Cas County's going to tackle some of those projects, so.
We, so.
This is, this is already, this is already through MetroCard, in twenty-twenty-three, that roundabout, and, and Fifty-Second going east.
And the Cheyenne.
So, so this, uh.
Oh, you're saying when it's planned from Cas County's perspective?
Yeah, the, this MOU that Jim mentioned.
It's also West Fargo and Fargo.
This MOU is a lot more robust than just talking about the portion Jim was mentioning. This MOU is going to address future projects, the county is intending on addressing in, you know, the next five, ten years within Horace. Uh, and one of the triggers is going to be when we have a population exceeding five thousand, that's when they turn over County Road Seventeen to us and County Road Six. Uh, so it's really a transition agreement, saying they're going to do these certain things. And we're going to talk about that on the sixteenth, that's also when it's going to go to the county commission, so you're going to see it a couple hours after the county commission or around the same time, to let you know how long their meeting goes. Uh, but within that, you know, what Russ is bringing up is there are some projects in there that the county is planning on doing. We could talk more detail of that on the sixteenth too. Uh, one is intersection improvements at sixty-four and county road seventeen. Uh, looking at a roundabout there in twenty twenty-three. They're also looking at replacing the bridge in twenty twenty-three over the Cheyenne River on county road seventeen. Uh, that would be twenty twenty-three. And then twenty twenty-three also doing improvements to, or replacing the fifty-second avenue bridge. So those are all county projects. And what the MOU outlines, and I have not, I literally got it about ten minutes before our meeting here. So I haven't been able to review any changes that they had, but what they had drafted was that they showed us. It basically showed that they would cover those projects at county standards. If we want things above and beyond or urbanized, then we may have some cost shares tied to it. But it's, uh, so far what we've seen is they're gonna do a lot of projects in Horace, put a lot of money of infrastructure improvements in our community and our, and nearby in the next couple of years. So between now and twenty twenty-five, you're gonna see a lot of different projects the county is going to be spearheading. Uh, and folks will see quite a few changes going on. Uh, most of them are going to be covered by the county. And like I said, the disagreement, once we reach five thousand, it will address other improvements like maintenance projects or doing an old mill overlay of county road seventeen, uh, county road six. And we've also discussed, so look, a little funny on where I'll say the description of where the road ends and begins based on city limits. But there's logic behind it because there's bridges there or some different infrastructure improvements that may happen outside those timeframes of when we transition to five thousand. But like I said, we'll get into more detail of that at the next meeting and we have the MOU before you. But we're still digesting all the changes there, so.
Still kinda gives an idea of what we're gonna be dealing with as far as, uh, the road improvements that are gonna be happening out here over the next three years.
Yes.
It, uh, sounds like kind of a no brainer to me, but what, uh, fund would we be looking at, um, utilizing for those expenses? I mean.
We need to know more of the scope of the project before we can really say how we're gonna pay for it. There's Prairie Dog, there's sales tax, you know, I hate to say the word specials. There's a lot of different avenues to fund projects, but as of right now, the MOU outlines a lot of project work that the county is proposing to take on on their dime, not on Horace's. So we'd have to have that project, you know, those projects scoped out, designed out a little bit to be able to really say, okay, the city, if the city does have a cost, how much would it be? It's too early to be able to say that right now.
And are we gonna up-design any of this stuff?
Yeah.
That'll be the thing. Cause right now, we don't know what their design, I mean, we have an idea, but we don't know for sure what their final design is.
Exactly right.
So then we gotta think ahead a little bit to what, if we do need to get involved and upsize something for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And the county's, was fairly good with us when we did this last go-around and the roundabout in seventy-sixth. We talked it through about what we needed to, you know, because of the school, they understood that. But I mean, they, they took on so much of it and then we took on the other part of it.
And those projects in twenty twenty-three, the county would most likely administer, not the city. Uh, so actually by the time we actually would have to pay, they were talking about if they do in twenty twenty-three, it could be twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. There's ways we're able to work with them on that too. So, uh, there, it'll be, it'll be a little different working with them on those projects though. Cause like I said, they're all gonna be, at least from my understanding, I don't know if Jim got that too, but they'd be county administered projects, so.
And they're longer range ones that we can plan along with them so that in four years from now, we'll all know where this is gonna land.
Yeah. One of the exciting things of the agreement is, uh, they're basically gonna rehab every road to some extent before they turn it over, which is the city would start with a road at the top of the maintenance cycle.
Fresh start.
Beating completely, you know, ground and then the city's gotta put money back into it to get it back up.
Which would be great, cause then it should hopefully give us another, you know, eight to ten, maybe even more. To, for, before we have to start getting involved in doing any maintenance on those roads again, so.
Yep.
I don't know about you guys, but I wanna do a little OJ.
Yeah.
That's good news.
Well, I just, I guess I wanna state where this all has come from and it's twofold. It's because we have created the relationships with the county that have not been in the past. And two, this is a part of the production, uh, or what we worked on with the diversion authority to get the five million dollars that we acquired and these other additional projects that we worked the county with. So these are all strategic that we as a council and, and our city have worked hard to get brought forward to the county and to show why we need these, this work to be done.
Yes.
So they're, they're coming through with what they have communicated they would do.
Well, I mean, I, I know that a lot of people are, you know, make comments and, and asked, you know, well, where's the council getting this money from? You know, we're spending all this money, we've got all this stuff going on. Well, let's face it, Horace is growing. And Chelsea, you and I had a conversation about that. Whether we like it or not, it's coming. So how do we keep our hands around it, right? To make sure that we're fostering positive change and not just being run over. And this is a really good piece of that and I like that. So forgive me for being vocal as the new average Joe here, but I, I'm seeing some good things and I want it to continue. Cause I think a lot of people don't understand and they just think it's an unlimited open checkbook. Well, it's not. There's strategy behind this and there's alternate funding sources and there's grant monies that were talked about last week. And deals that have been made by several individuals that are putting monies back in the pocket and cutting the costs of some of these projects, partnerships with the county. So, you know, we may have talked about it and it might've just got over people's heads because all they see is the dollar signs. But whether we like it or not, with the bond referendum, the growth is coming. How do we minimize the impact to our people, but yet maximize the return for our community while still, still maintaining and beautifying our gorgeous Horace, which I fell in love with when I first moved here many years ago. So, good.
Yep.
And, and just to mention really quick, what council everybody brought up was a lot of these mechanisms have taken time to come into effect. So you're just starting to see them come into play, like our sales tax. We were able to knock down quite a bit of the cost on seventy-sixth roundabout. You know, the city put a million dollars in sales tax, county put a million towards that. That takes time to build and get there to where actually it does benefit, you know, help and make an impact. Uh, seeking out grant dollars or low interest loans, uh, like I said, I wanna stress the last time, or like we did at the last council meeting, we weren't eligible for some of those. We weren't, cause of our audit findings, that improved, uh, our status with the state to where we could seek the dollars again. And we have other challenges based on some of our demographics in town of like household income. Jim mentioned that with Army Corps. That's going to impact us. It doesn't make it to where we can't pursue the dollars. It just makes it that much more of a challenge that we have to sell it.
We gotta try other avenues, cause we just, there's some we can't.
And sometimes it does, you know, we can't apply for them. So anyways, I just wanna echo that, just to make sure everybody, you know, folks understand that's what we're going through, so.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions for Brendan? Good. All right, then we'll move along to the portfolio reports.
I did have one note really quick on the line. Um, board equalization meeting, we do that every year in the spring. That'll be April nineteenth is what we're looking at. Uh, that's where Paul Focaccia comes and he shows the tax valuation for the city. And, uh, that's, you know, it gives off property or opportunity to come and, uh, express their concerns about.
And we're gonna wanna make sure that gets communicated.
Sess value.
We wanna make sure that gets communicated out to everybody knows that, so.
From two thousand twenty values, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Right, and then new one, if there.
For the next, for the next tax year.
For the next tax year, okay.
So it's what bills would be due around this time year, next year.
Next year.
So, yep.
We're really letting him back here?
Yeah, we. Paul, Paul, Paul likes to come to us, so.
I mean, then with the rest of humor.
But if anybody, you know, and when we get closer to that meeting, I'll bring that up to council again. Uh, we'll stress that. Uh, if folks have concerns about their assessed values of their property, they need to contact, uh, the county, Cass County's, uh, assesses office there, talk to Paul or their staff there. They will help make sure that you understand how, where they came from or how they're at and also have a discussion with you. I know some of you have had those conversations. Many residents have done that too. Uh, you gotta talk with them. If you have concerns about that amount, you gotta talk to them, express that concern because they're the, they're really the ones getting into the weeds, the numbers, and they're giving a amount. You know, reflecting, hey, this is what our numbers show and explaining that to the council. So, but they're very informative and it's always best to hit them up early, talk with them early. Because then you're not, you're not, you know, one of many other people all at the same time trying to do that. So if you have concerns about that dollar amount, talk to them soon and address it early.
When is the next Horace happiness publication going out? Will it be prior to this meeting?
The, yes, before the tax equalization meeting, yeah. But it's going to print here this week. And then we, we'd have another one right around the same time, around this time. But we'd bring it, we'd bring it forth in utility bill, um, website during council meetings. So there's many other opportunities. Also, the county publishes it in the newspaper. And I can't recall, I think they do send a letter out that says the tax equalization dates.
They do.
They do a city level, yes, they do. They do a letter identifies the dates at the city level, county level, and state level. Uh, if you're, you know, protest at the state level, you have had to have protested at both the local and the city, local and county, I believe. Um, but it does identify all three dates on that letter and locations, so.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, you good?
Yep.
All right. Refilling reports, I guess the only thing I've got on mine right now is that, uh, this week at the legislature group, they've got five bonding bills that are currently in play. Um, we're not sure how this is all gonna fall out. We're watching it, um, obviously, because right now we are, we'd like, we'd like to see that bonding bill, a version get passed. Um, not really sure right now if one is better than the other because they all have language in them that means, yes. But I think if they, if we can get some of this melted down a little bit more, or they can kinda bring this in either one or two, then I think we can get a little bit more involved in this. We know where this is gonna go. But right now it's still fairly nebulous as to how, which one of these is gonna fall through the cracks. So we are gonna be watching it. And if we have to run out to Vismark to testify, we're gonna go, cause this is important to the city. So we are monitoring what's going on out there and are keeping our legislators involved in this because they know what we, what we're looking for. So we'll keep an eye on it. All right, with that, I'll pass. Sarah?
I don't have much of an update. I haven't said enough. Spending an inordinate amount of time just trying to get caught up on all the different developments in our area and whatnot. But I'm going to be starting to, uh, review some of the planning and zoning work that is upcoming. So I will have hopefully an update very soon for you as I get a little more involved in that.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you. Steve?
Um, nothing really other than, uh, my, the last MetroCog meeting. You're out here introduced to some, uh, metro-wide information that they present every year that's being finalized and has some really interesting statistics about metro area in terms of job growth, age, uh, amount of freight moved and, and, uh, truck time routes and all these types of things. And I think once they publish that, so a lot of people would be very interested in the information that is there and be very surprised on some of the stuff that we have, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Significant amount of air freight being moved into this city, even before Amazon comes, so. Yeah, this was in nineteen too, not even twenty yet, so.
Wow.
No, that's all.
Cool.
So before, we gotta congratulate Dave on being the lead, the council or the, the MetroCog chair.
Chair.
For which.
Both the policy board and the executive committee right now.
So congratulations on being elected in that poll, so.
Well, congratulations.
Well, they rotate, they rotate, uh, all the participating, um, resident, uh, participating. So it's a smiley on your eyes twice for your last day, so.
Congrats.
I'll take it.
So I'm just hoping he doesn't ask me to stand in for him.
All right. What do you got, Chelsea, besides that?
So, um, I, I go to park board meetings and I guess I can note on their stuff that they did hire an employee to help them with their website and, um, uh, you know, that correspondence type avenues. And so they're getting a new website. They're gonna have, um, online forums for the different activities. And then with Metal Art Park opening, um, I don't know if that'll be open this summer yet or, or how far. Might be more into the fall. Um, but, uh, that'll be able to give them more opportunity for activities as well. And they have, I think, another shared employee that's coming on board. So hopefully we'll see, um, some new stuff with them and you can keep your eye out for their new website. I believe it's gonna be their original website address, but, um, they're gonna do, uh, more promotional stuff. So just keep your eyes open on Facebook.
Good.
And then we, I talked with Hannah a little bit more about some of the events. And, um, she really felt that with the ten-year, I believe of September eleventh, that we should maybe consider moving bean days. Um, and I open to that. It's raining the last two years and it's been very miserable for the two of us to work very hard.
Yep.
Um, so we're looking at August twenty, um, seventh and eighth, I believe. It's a Friday and Saturday. So we're gonna try to do some, we're gonna, we're looking at moving the events around a little bit to make our day, um, a little bit more manageable. So potentially like, you know, moving some stuff to Friday, like the car show and then looking at some time changes. Um, so with that, we'll, we'll have more information coming out on that. And then we are also looking at promoting a garage sale weekend again in May. So people that like to, wanna go through all their stuff and get rid of some things, um, keep an eye out for that information as well.
Okay.
I think that's it.
You guys gonna try and get a big tarp so we can just bring it over in case it rains?
Yeah. Bean days. Oh my gosh, yeah.
Be a hold two on rain events?
Well, and.
Or two and O on rain events?
Hopefully it'll maybe be a little bit warmer moving it up a couple of weeks. The other nice thing about it is, um, school will be in session. So, you know, if we wanna get the, once the high schools open, if we wanna get those kids in the parade and, I mean, even getting, you know, I'm excited to potentially get more of those middle school and high school kids involved with bean days and helping with it. So that's nice that school will be started. Um, and then also we can kind of back up from West Fest a little bit too, which I think is, is nice.
Yeah, that'll be good too, cause I know, um, the school's asked about that, you know, if the kids get more involved with different things in the city. I think this would be a big one, kind of that coordinated with them, to start that, you know, if they have a West Fest. We start doing stuff like that with the school here in town, that'd be wonderful.
Yep, and we've had conversations with Bobby and Hannah about, um, keeping that line of communication open with those schools and making sure that we're involving the kids and, and, and trying to figure out some new ways to get, get them involved in things.
Can the kids build floats and enter into the parade around the school? I mean, how fun would that be?
Yeah, that's what I mean. So there's avenues we can get them involved in this stuff. Great.
Yeah.
There's also a shared use path, collect, connecting all the schools too.
Steve?
Yeah. The band can start at the school and really march.
Come on down.
Uh, that's, that's my favorite part of the parade. No offense. I know, but I love the band.
All right. Right.
Um, last week, uh, Brendan and I went out to Vismark to testify, uh, in opposition of a small portion of the, uh, a bill that's, uh, that was requested by the southeast, uh, rural water, uh, not rural water, but it's southeast water district.
Southeast gas.
So, yeah, so, uh, essentially that would affect Horace residents in terms of the maintenance, uh, that we would be charged. And we'd have to go to vote, to voters, uh, before it would be approved. And we said, no, we don't, we don't wanna burden, you know, any maintenance activity. Uh, that's why we have a board, uh, to approve those kind of projects and use the funds that are already allocated for this district to, to handle the maintenance. So, um, so we went out to, to essentially voice our opposition to that, uh, and talked to our legislators as well, uh, to express that. That if they get a chance to talk to those, uh, those board members on that committee to express, you know, our opposition. And it's, it's really not the whole bill. It's one small portion of it, uh, that would actually affect us. But, uh, there were lots of other, um, parties, let's just say, that are in opposition and, you know, of that bill as well. So there's, there's gonna be a lot of, lot of work on that bill. And, you know, of that bill as well, so there's, there's gonna be a lot of, lot of work on that bill, uh, but, so we'll have to stay in touch with that.
There were men, basically every city in the metro and our local government testified against it. Um, and also, uh, there was an amended version of the bill submitted literally hour, you know.
I'm guessing it's gonna be amended a couple more times.
They do that.
Yeah.
So anyways, uh, I don't believe there was any determination that, I don't know.
But this, this related to like Drake twenty-seven.
Yeah.
The Cheyenne River and the Cheyenne diversion.
Yeah.
While projects that are invested by the water.
That's what, that's one of those we gotta pay attention to, so they don't go modifying it again.
Right.
You know, to keep some of those provisions in there that will be not favorable to the metro area, so.
I mean, I get what they're trying to accomplish, they're trying to clean it up and remove some duplicate language that was in that bill before. So this, this isn't a new bill, it's a rework of an existing, uh, law that's century code, uh, but it's, it's a massive rewrite of that bill. So there's, there's just so much going on and there's, uh, that's why there's the expression, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting war. Uh, this is definitely a situation where there are people just massive interest in fighting over water, it's incredible.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Brian?
Oh, that's it.
All right, then with that, we are at the end of the show, I wanna look for a motion to adjourn. Brian and Dave, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are done, thank you everyone.
No, no, this is important, oh, okay.